Call to order for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. We have Pastor Darrell Friday with Abundant Life Christian Center here for our invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come before you at this time giving praise and worship. Great honor be to you, Father. And Father, I thank you for this opportunity to be with leaders of our community. And now, Lord, I ask you to bless them, give them the wisdom and the knowledge needed to lead, to guide, to help our community. And Father, truly, we are truly one nation under God, and I thank you for that privilege. And now, Lord, as we stand here, Father, I thank you as we pray for the awakening of our nation, that we would wake up into spiritual growth, wake up to spiritual understanding. And now, Father, I just bless this people as they lead and guide this people, this community, and we ask this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Friday. Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Duckett? Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Here.
Mayor Cornman. We have five present, and we do have a quorum.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter disclosed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. I believe we have one this evening, Mr. Spencer Jones. Please approach the podium.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to do so. I haven't missed for the last couple of times. I asked Mr. Matt this morning that he heard, this afternoon, that he heard from Mr. Harvey regarding the work that Mr. Harvey said that he was doing, that he said he was doing regarding the King business, and he said he hadn't heard from him. But I read an article in the paper here two months ago of work Mr. Bunsen had done that was troubling. Something passed regarding Rush Limbaugh Street in Cape, and then there was another city that had a W winter something, I'm not sure. I'm not anti-Mr. Bunsen because I subscribe to conservative views, but it was troubling. He got that done, but got nothing done regarding the King thing. So that pretty well bring me to the conclusion what we need to do. And it's not something we want to do, but it's something that we have to do. We have to start, we're having a Poplar Bluff Day here, 4th of July. I will begin talking to people about joining us for prayer. We'll start, only the Lord know how long it will take, but we'll continue to do it until changes come. Because history proves that no institution changes without confrontation. It's sad because all of us know what's right. We know it's right to have a King tree. We know it's right to have a black policeman. We know it's right to have a black man for a fireman. And we know all of that's right. And we know that things get done intentionally. I'll use this illustration. I stay in Florida, I stay in Poplar Bluff, I stay in Chicago. My block, I stay in Chicago, half white, half black. I intentionally do things for whites to make them feel accepted and loved because I know they may be in the minority now, or to make them fight the lead I cook for all the time. So, you know, that's troubling. So when we intentionally, we get things done. So I don't, not a type guy, throw a rock in your hand, you're going to know what my ticket are, which way we're going, and that's the way we're going to go. Because Mr. Harvey Bill, I don't know him, you got, I know of him, he made a promise that he's going to get this done four, five years ago. He put the blame on you guys at the time, that the fact that you all hadn't, you know, told him to do it. So, but I explained to him, well, now you know what needs to be done. I haven't heard from him, I will endeavor to call his office, I will tell him exactly, even if we have to go to Jefferson City to get it done, we are going to get it done. I don't know whether you want to make any comments or not, but you hear our heart.
Well, I know that the session is over unfortunately for this year.
Yeah.
And he is out of the country at the moment, but I have made a note, and I think that we can follow up with him when he does get back to see why other communities maybe were done and ours wasn't, and where that process is for us.
Well, I, as an African American, I read that, I pretty well knew why you didn't get it done. It's not a priority. When things are priority, whether they on a block club, whether they're in a city, whatever it is, we totally get things done. The Rush Limbaugh in Cape was a priority with him. The getting it done in the other, I don't want to have the other town, because I happened to read the paper, and I was shocked. I mean, because I would have known it, that that was happening, but there was no reference to the King thing. And if he or anybody else think we're going away, I got news for you.
Well, we'll make sure that we relay that, that it is a priority, and see where we can go next session.
And I appreciate your spirit and attitude, because spirit and attitude is everything. All along that kind of thing.
Well, I appreciate your determination, so we'll get it done.
Oh, yeah, it's going to get done.
I believe that's all for citizens input. Item seven, Mingo Job Corps Student Government Association, we have Ms. Carol Marshall here.
Yes.
Please come to the podium.
How are you all?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. I would like to say that we are fortunate and glad that we are here. I called Mayor Winters and asked that we could be here for training purposes and to make known a little bit of what we do out at Mingo Job Corps. I think it's advantageous for the students to be here to watch the meeting, to watch how the business process, you know, goes, and they do a pretty good job at it themselves. But I do think training and having our future leaders ready and set to go when it's their turn to lead. So with that being said, we have three of our officers here, and they can come up and introduce themselves. Again, thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Samaya Cotton, and I'm part of the SGA Government Association. My current role is Acting President, though my official role is Secretary. And on my left is...
My name is Jacob Marazzi. I'm currently a Student Government Association Representative for Mingo Job Corps.
And my name is Jayden Slavings. I am also currently simply a representative of the Student Government Association.
And basically, what we do is listen to the students, and we are their voice. We take the information that they give us, and we turn it into actions, basically. We try to make things happen to better the community and better the place for the students. And that's pretty much it.
Awesome. Well, we're glad you're here with us tonight and hope you enjoy the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. That's wonderful.
Items, item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider a request to approve the discharge of fireworks inside city limits on Saturday, June 17th, 2023, for a Juneteenth celebration. We had Ms. Nikki Johnson to present. Is there someone else with the event that is in the audience? That's okay. If not, I know she's been here each year for this event, every year asking for the approval of this. I believe there hasn't been any issues in the past, and we've approved it without any fault, so I just need either approve or deny from the council.
With that being said, I move that we approve this as presented.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will consider a request to approve change order number two for the Community Development Block Grant Storm Water and Drainage Improvement Project Number 18 DP MIT 19. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Fox. So this change order is for the drainage improvements that were made along Maude Street. They were funded with a Community Development Block Grant, and there were five items that were included in this change order. The first one were some unforeseen utility interferences at eight different locations on the project that resulted in some additional work. There's also eight and a half feet, eight and a half linear feet of additional sidewalk replacement along Maude Street, additional asphalt pavement to a 32-foot by 27-foot, and a 30-foot by 2-foot area on Cynthia Street. There was also an additional 43 linear feet of street repair on Cynthia, and 35 linear feet of additional sidewalk repair on Maude Street. The totals of this change order is $48,028.75. This was a, project was completely funded by the grant funds, and this addition will also be funded with those grant funding, so it won't be any money out of the city's budget to cover those additional costs.
I make a motion to move into the voting session to be held tonight. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item C, the City Council will consider a request to use American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of a new fire truck. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. So last year, seems like a long time ago, the Fire Department ordered a new ladder truck. Total cost was $969,484. That was included in this year's budget. What I'm asking tonight is to allow us to use $500,000 of ARPA funds to supplement the capital budget that was included for this year. There were some projects that we had originally discussed being done with the ARPA funds, such as the City Hall demolition that we've gotten a grant for, and some stormwater projects that we've gotten some grant for. So this won't take away from any of those projects that I'd previously discussed about potential uses for ARPA funds, and it just kind of gives a little relief on the capital fund side of our budget for this year.
I make a motion to move into the voting session to be held June 19th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And just so you know, the truck, they're going for their final inspection on June the 19th. It will be here later that week and should be leading the parade on 4th of July, so.
That's awesome.
It is exciting.
Yes. I know it's been a long time since they've been able to have...
It has, it is, and especially this particular, the ladder truck is several, you know, it's quite, it's 20-plus years old, so it's time for new, and the maintenance costs on what they're driving now is just astronomical every year, so they're excited about it.
I think the city manager is just as excited about it.
I am, I am. I don't think her insurance will cover me driving it, but...
Maybe they'll give you a good...
Make a drive around the block or something like that.
I don't think we want you to.
Probably not.
Moving on to action required items. Item AA, Bill Number 8478, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for a vehicle lift for the motor pool department.
Make a motion for a first reading of Bill Number 8478.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance accepting a bid from Autotech Systems of Catawissa, Missouri, for a vehicle lift for the motor pool in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8478.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance accepting a bid from Autotech Systems of Catawissa, Missouri, for a vehicle lift for the motor pool in Poplar Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption of Bill Number 8478.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill Number 8478 is adopted. Item BP, Bill Number 8479, the City Council will take action on an ordinance granting an easement to Spire Inc. for city-owned property located at 2006 South 11th Street.
Make a motion for a first reading of Bill Number 8479.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance granting an easement to Spire Missouri Inc. for an underground natural gas line along and south of South 11th Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8479. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance granting an easement to Spire Missouri Inc. for an underground natural gas line along and south of South 11th Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Make a motion for adoption of Bill Number 8479.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill Number 8479 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8480, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the 2023 FY budget for the City of Poplar Bluff relative to the purchase of basketball court equipment for the Black River Coliseum.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8480. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for the City of Poplar Bluff and accepting the lowest and best proposal for portable basketball court accessories for the Black River Coliseum.
Make a motion for a second reading of Bill Number 8480.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for the City of Poplar Bluff and accepting the lowest and best proposal for portable basketball court accessories for the Black River Coliseum.
Make a motion.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill Number 8480 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 8481, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number two for the Community Development Block Grant Storm Water and Drainage Improvement Project Number 18-DP-MIT-19.
Make a motion for a first reading of 8481.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two relating to the Community Development Block Grant Storm Water Drainage Improvements Project Number 18 DP MIT 19 for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8481. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Phelps?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two relating to the Community Development Block Grant Storm Water Drainage Improvements Project Number 18 DP MIT 19 for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption of Bill Number 8480.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill Number 8481 is adopted. Item EE, Resolution Number 2008, the City Council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Airport Advisory Board, Downtown Poplar Bluff Board, Municipal Utilities Advisory Board, Tree Advisory Board, Residential Housing Advisory Board, and Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Make a motion for a reading of Resolution Number 2008.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Phelps?
A resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the Airport Advisory Board, Downtown Poplar Bluff Inc. Board, Municipal Utilities Advisory Board, Zoning Board of Adjustments, Tree Advisory Board, and Residential Housing Advisory Board.
Motion for adoption of Resolution 2008. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Resolution Number 2008 is adopted. Item FF, Resolution Number 2009, the City Council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Animal Control Advisory Board, Arts and Museum Advisory Board, Fair Housing Committee, Historical Preservation Commission, Housing Authority Board, Library Board of Trustees, Park Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Disabilities Advisory Board, Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority, and the Black River Coliseum Advisory Board of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Make a motion for a first reading of Resolution Number 2009.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Phelps?
A resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the Animal Control Advisory Board, Arts and Museum Advisory Board, Fair Housing Committee, Historical Preservation Commission, Housing Authority Board, Library Board of Trustees, Park Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Disabilities Advisory Board, and the Black River Coliseum Advisory Board of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption of Resolution 2009. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Clerk Phelps?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Resolution Number 2009 is adopted. Item GG, Resolution Number 2010, the City Council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Plumbing Board, Electrical Wiring Board, Building Standards Board, and the Heating and Air Conditioning Board of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for reading of Resolution 2010.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Phelps?
A resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the Plumbing Board, Electrical Wiring Board, Building Standards Board, and the Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning, and Refrigeration Board of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2010.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Resolution Number 2010 has been adopted. I believe we do not have a closed session tonight, so we'll go into our city manager's report.
Thank you, ma'am. We had a really busy weekend in town over the, if you didn't get out and take advantage of some of the activities, the Margaret Harwell Art Museum had their Plain Air Fest that ended Saturday with a family festival. Then that evening, the Parks Department had their Welcome Summer Event that was at Whitley Park, which had a really good turnout, and then the Cruisin', the first Cruisin' of the year was also at Whitley Park that evening in conjunction with the Welcome Summer. And then the Aaron Lewis Concert on Friday nights. We had a lot of activities going on with the city this past weekend. This week, we have our first basketball games in the Black River Coliseum. They start Wednesday and run through the weekend. If you haven't been in there, you should look before you leave, they're in the process of putting the courts down for that, for Wednesday.
I agree.
You know, it's amazing to think this is already the beginning of June, and just in less than about a month, we have the 4th of July Parade. And the past years have been kind of sponsored by Fox Radio, and this year, the Daily American Republic has taken over that role and going to be sponsoring the 4th of July Parade. Farmer's Market is in full swing, so Saturday morning, stop by the Farmer's Market and see all the vendors and stuff that are set up over there selling their wares. I'd really like to thank Carolyn Marshall for bringing her students from the Mingo Job Corps that are part of the Student Government Association. It's good to see young people getting introduced to government. It's important to be involved, and I hope as you move forward, you will continue to be involved with your local government. Carolyn can speak to how important it is to have an active role in your local government. So we appreciate y'all being here. The last thing I wanted to talk about is something I've kind of been excited about. We've talked about it a little bit, it's getting closer, though. So June 11th through the 20th is the U.S. Department of Defense in partnership with DAOC, which is the Community Action Agency in the Boot Hill, Missouri, the South Central Community Action Agency, and the Shawnee Development Council, which is in Illinois, are hosting the Operation Healthy Delta Innovative Readiness Training. And so what this is, is the military reserves come in from June 11th through the 20th, we'll probably have between 75 and 100 members of the reserves in town that are going to provide no-cost health and medical services to anybody that shows up. On a first-come, first-served basis, they're going to have a basic medical wellness exams and physicals. They'll have dentists on hand that can do dental exams, extractions, fillings, and sealants. They'll have optetricians on hand to do optical exams and also provide single vision prescription classes. They'll have emotional stability and life coaches. They'll have exercise performance, mobility, and motion improvement injury management. And these are all practicing professionals that are members of the reserves of all the different branches of the military, and this is their training for the year. They come in and they provide these services at no cost. There is no income requirements, there's no insurance, proof of insurance required, and no identification is needed. It's not just for Poplar Bluff residents or even Butler County residents. Anyone can attend this event. There's one here, there's one at the Best Activity Center on the campus of Three Rivers College, there's one in Sykesville at Minor Baptist Church, and there's one in Anna Jonesboro, Illinois. It's, you know, we have such great medical facilities in our community, however, we don't have enough of them. So to be able to provide this no-cost service to people, to get them on the right path, they'll be able to, you know, they're here for those nine days and then they're gone, but they have coordinated with local providers to help make a bridge to some more long-term care to the people that come through their doors. Like I said, probably be 75 to 100 members of the military that are here in town during those times providing those services. I really appreciate all the hard work that Ann Smith with South Central Community Action Agency has put into planning and coordinating this event. It's been a monumental task that her and her staff have undertaken. We've, I've been glad that we have got to partner with them, we're providing some help with them. We've, you know, for those members of the military that are going to be here, we're working with her to, you know, provide them with some recreational opportunities when they're not, providing services, you know, whether it be visiting our museums, or swimming in the pools, or playing golf, or whatever it is they need to do in their off hours. So it's a big event, and I'm excited to see, you know, they expect probably 1,500 or more people that they will see over the course of those nine days, so. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Can you come to the podium for me, please?
I wanted to ask the question, who makes the appointments to these boards?
We have an application process that we advertise, and people put in their applications, and normally it's the, we get about the number of...
Or less.
If we're lucky, we get the same number of applicants that we have openings for, and then the council reviews those applications and approves the nominations.
I would certainly like to come down and get my hands, because my question would be, is there any African Americans on these boards?
Ms. Marshall actually serves on...
Historical Preservation.
Two boards, is that correct? Or she serves on one now, she's being, she's applied for a second one.
Rex Rattler?
Rex Rattler serves.
I just invited someone a minute ago, because we do have some vacancies on a few boards still, so... boards still, so there is a few boards that...
We just want to make sure we're fair, okay?
Yes, sir. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. And I just wanted to say thank you for the audience. It's always nice to see people in the chairs when we show up to these meetings and there's no one there. Sometimes, you know, we wonder if anyone's listening and paying attention, so it's nice that you're here. If there's no further business to come before the council, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.